Welcome to the April Kailua Neighborhood Board Regular Meeting. This meeting is called to order at 7:01. We've got a busy agenda tonight. We have seven committee motions. And as we must do with all hybrid meetings, we will start with a roll call. Josiah Akau. Present. Travis Council. Present. Amber Granite. Kellyanne Kobayashi. David Laia. Jade Lau. Present. Mike Lee. Present. Levani Lipton. Carol Mioshiro. Present. Kayla Morrell. Kate Ryder.
Present.
Present remotely. Claudine Tomasa. Present. Steve Trecker. Present. Evan Weber. Gary Weller. Present. John White. Donna Wong. Present. Jeff Sukernick. Present. I am here. All right, we have a forum with 11 in person and one remote for 12. Forum is 10. Our next order of business are announcements. We are so much looking forward to the annual Kailua Town Party, which was brought back after a hiatus last year. And we're looking forward to this year's Kailua Town Party. It'll be held on Kailua Road in downtown Kailua on Sunday, April 28th, from 11 until 4. Please come to the town party and please stop by the Kailua Neighborhood Board tent, where we will conduct a public survey and provide educational outreach materials. Also this month, the Lanikai Emergency Preparedness Fair will be held 10 a.m. until 1 p.m. on Sunday, April 14th, at the Lanikai Community Park, 126 Kailina Drive. The fair is being hosted by the Lanikai Emergency Preparedness Committee of the Lanikai Association, Bluestone HOA, and Mid-Pacific Country Club. It's also supported by the Kailua Neighborhood Board and Kailua Alert and Prepared. The event was organized in response to the recent Maui wildfire disaster. The community realizes that their neighborhood is vulnerable to the same type of disaster. This fair will promote educational activities to help people prepare for such an emergency. Are there any other announcements this evening? Okay, we'll move on. Honolulu Police Department and Honolulu Fire Department reports. We'll start with HPD Officer Atkins.
Good evening. I'm Officer Atkins with the District 4 Community Policing Team. I have the stats for Kailua. For the month of March, there were two vehicle thefts versus three the previous month. There were five burglaries in March versus nine the previous month. And there were 28 thefts in March versus 34 the previous month. There were eight car break-ins versus six the previous months. And zero robberies in March versus zero the previous month. And then I also have the stats compared to last year. And there were three less motor vehicle thefts this year. There were two less burglaries this year. There was quite a bit less theft this year, almost half less. And there were 10 less car break-ins this year, so much better than last year. That's all I have for the stats. I can take any questions or concerns?
Questions this evening for Officer Atkins? Online? Community members present? No questions. Everyone is happy that all crime statistics are down. Keep up the good work.
Great, thank you.
Mahalo. Next, Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening. I'm Captain Pungilinan from the Kailua Fire Station, and I'll be providing the statistics for the month of April for this geographical region. Structure fires, we had one. Wildland and brush fires, zero. Nuisance fires, one. Cocaine fires, one. Activated alarms where there was no fire, we had eight. Emergencies, we had 104 medical emergencies. Motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, we had zero. Motor vehicle crash collisions, we had five. Mountain rescues, we had three. Ocean rescues, we had one. And hazard materials incidents, we had zero. The fire safety tips and announcements. A fire safety tip for this month is evacuation planning. Have an emergency preparedness plan ready in case of an environmental emergency, fire, or natural disaster. Know two ways out of your home and consider the route you will take if you need to evacuate from your home, from your neighborhood due to an emergency. You can learn more at visit, sorry, at fire.honolulu.gov. Lastly, leave early enough to avoid being caught in fire, smoke, or road congestion. Establish a predetermined location such as a well-prepared neighbor, a relative's house, a low-risk area, or a shelter or evacuation center. Take your emergency supply kit containing your family and pets' necessary items. That concludes my report. Are there any questions?
All right, mahalo. Questions for HFD tonight? Steve Trecker. You said there was three mountain rescues last month, correct?
Correct.
How many of them involved the use of a helicopter for the rescue?
I don't have those particular stats for those three incidents. I can get those for you for next month's neighborhood report.
All right, other questions for HFD? Online? Any audience questions? All right, mahalo, Cap. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, you too.
Yeah, next order of business, board business with committee motions. This evening, we have seven committee motions, which is quite a bit. And we'll march through them. The first one is the Kailua Neighborhood Board approves the recommendations and comments of the Transportation and Public Works Committee on the Department of Transportation Services draft Lanikai Transportation Management Plan. This is from the Transportation Public Works Committee. I will introduce it with some data and some of the highlights. And Travis, I'll turn it over to you if there's anything that you would like to add.
Sounds good.
The essential problem is today, as it has been for decades, the essential problem is parking supply and demand between 10 a.m. and 4 p.m. in Lanikai. Parking demand exceeding parking supply chronically exists, 10 a.m. to 4 p.m., causing periodic gridlock and a myriad of other problems, including missed appointments, blocked driveways, dangerous intersections. Before 10 a.m. and after 4 p.m., such gridlock is not experienced as the available parking inventory, including the non-bike lane side of the Loop, is sufficient for the reduced parking demand during the off-peak hours. A little bit of data, around 1 p.m. on a Wednesday, partly cloudy. Non-peak afternoon, there are 198 vehicles parked on the Loop and the nine cross streets. Recently, during spring break, on a Monday at 1 p.m., a sunny day near peak, there were 333 vehicles parked on the Loop and the nine cross streets. If we resorted to legal on-pavement parking on the cross streets only, it could generate an estimated 116 legal parking stalls. And that's the crux of the problem. When the demand is 198 on an off-peak day and 333 on a near-peak day between 10 and 4, and if the available supply with legal spaces was only 116, that equals gridlock. And even if that were augmented by, you know, patches of designated places on the non-bike lane side of the Loop here and there, the demand signal would still far outstrip the supply. Honolulu Emergency Medical Services made 38 responses for critical and serious calls in 2013, and they made 47 responses in 2023. In 2013, the response time range for the Kailua unit was 5 to 12 minutes. In 2023, the Kailua unit averaged 28 minutes for their responses. And there are also some responses from Kaniua and other places that took longer. So the data shows a degradation in the EMS response times. Representative Lisa Martin has reported at another meeting that the current usage of the Pillbox Trail is up to 2,000 hikers per day. The committee held a two-and-a-half-hour meeting on March 21st to hear resident comments and concerns and develop comments and recommendations. Tonight is our opportunity to agree on comments and recommendations. This is our only opportunity. The deadline for comments is April 30th. Unless and until there is an all-of-the-above type of approach to reduce the parking demand signal. And all of the above would be 2,000 hikers on the Pillbox Trail, check-in in a storefront and be shuttled in. It would be reservations for the Pillbox Trail. Probably some kind of advanced reservation system for the limited parking with parking fees, maybe $5 or $10 an hour with a three-hour maximum time limit. Increased use of Bus Route 671, more bicycle usage, aggressive enforcement. Basically, an all-of-the-above approach, which would require a lot of coordination, perhaps some changes in ordinances, and take time. But unless and until that demand signal could get within the available supply, the approach recommended by the Lanikai Association, the Lanikai Canoe Club, the Mid-Pacific Country Club, the Bluestone Association of Apartment Owners, the Kailua Public Charter School, and many other Lanikai residents to prohibit parking in Lanikai between 10 a.m. and 4 p.m. on a daily basis is necessary to address the chronic traffic problems within Lanikai. I recommend doubling the Route 671 frequency from every 40 minutes to every 20 minutes, using suitably-sized equipment during times of day with heavier Lanikai usage, including 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. We have previously specifically recommended to the DLNR that an advanced reservation system be established for managed access with an appropriate fee for non-residents to include an off-site storefront check-in somewhere in Kailua with frequent shuttle transportation between the check-in site and the trailhead. As mentioned, 2,000 people a day. Sometimes hike the trail. And if they used a shuttle from a downtown Kailua check-in rather than attempting to drive into Lanikai themselves, that would be an important step. Recommend the city establish and maintain bike racks at each of the beach access points on the bike lane side of Mokalua Drive. Bike racks should also be installed on Ka'alepulu Drive near the trailhead. Another previous Neighborhood Board recommendation was requesting that the city install no parking here to corner signs on the cross streets. The cross streets are often jammed up to and into the intersection, making it difficult to make turns onto the Loop. Recommend that DTS explore the feasibility of making all cross streets a consistent minimum of 18 feet wide and implementing a pavement stall marking on all nine cross streets. Recommend examining the area fronting 843 Mokalua Drive. That's the Ala Point wastewater pumping station, the green building near the exit. Examine that for paved pull-in parking for two handicap spaces and some three-minute loading/unloading spaces. And also look for some other places on the non-bike lane side of the drive to have a couple more designated three-minute loading/offloading spaces so that people aren't interrupting the flow in the bike lane and causing dangerous conditions for bicyclists. Recommend that the city construct a restroom facility for Lanikai beach users and then properly maintain it. And we would suggest that the city explore the feasibility of that Ala Point wastewater pumping station facility, the green building, as a possible location. And do not concur with the use of Waikiki trolley type of commercial service into Lanikai that would create an appearance of turning Lanikai into a Waikiki-type of environment. And so those are the highlights. In total, there are eight pages of comments and recommendations. They've been posted on our meeting materials website. And these are the ones arranged or arrived at from the two-and-a-half-hour meeting. I'll turn it over to Travis for any additional comments.
Thank you, Bill. First of all, I think you covered a lot of it. That was a well-attended meeting and eight pages of thorough recommendations and comments that I thought did a good job, not only reflecting the Lanikai Association and Lanikai residents' concerns, but also the broader community. So no further comments from myself, but yeah, great, thank you. You need a second? Happy to second if there's.
Okay, thank you. There is a question. Is a motion required? And the answer is no, because it's a committee motion, so it's an automatic motion. Doesn't need to be moved or seconded. It's on the agenda. So we are now open for discussion. Donna Wong.
Yes, in the recommendations, it's on page 11. It says that a trolley system was being recommended. Was that by the city? And I agree with the recommendation to not support that because we don't want it to turn into even more of a Waikiki-type tourist destination. We need something to get people there without their cars. And I'm not sure if just increasing the bus would do it. So.
Yeah, I mean, that's a problem we're all going to have to grapple with. The reality is that we, as a community and as an island, including our visitors, have grappled with it on the three-day-long weekends, the frequent times when the water mains were being replaced and other roadwork. And making it more bike-friendly with bike racks, improvements connecting the bike lane between the beach park and Lanikai, shuttles for the pillbox hikers, and doubling the frequency of the bus are the things that are achievable. But with the demand outstripping the supply so much, we're open for any other ideas?
Could maybe a trolley system, I hate that image, be on a trial period just to the pillbox? Just to the pillbox, turn around, and then leave, and that's it?
Yeah, and as you know, that was the previous board recommendation to DLNR, was to institute a shuttle from an off-site check-in. You know, if what they ultimately come up with for managed access is, you know, you know, would be a private operator running some kind of a shuttle, if that so happens to be a Waikiki shuttle-type thing, but specifically for people with reservations for the pillbox trail, you know, we could come up with comments when DLNR proposes that. Other comments and discussion? Travis Council?
Just a quick note on that. One, I think it's important, as you noted earlier, that comments are still open until the end of April, so we encourage individuals to still make their own comments. And another point that the DTS plan was a basically proposal of a lot of ideas that they hadn't selected any of. So these comments and the public comments go into them kind of deciding what they'll try to implement. So it could be any of the above or new ideas that come from the public comments.
Correct. Any online discussion? Gary Weller.
Maybe this question is for Lisa. Why a pillbox? Why do we not close it, end it? That would eliminate parking problems, tourist problems, people problems. Why a pillbox?
There are some people that would like to close it, especially perhaps some neighbors right around there. But I think that the pillbox is a very, very well-loved trail. It's stunning views, it's close, it's exercise for people, for dogs. And the hope is to have a better managed pillbox rather than resorting to closing it.
Levani Lipton?
This is more, it's not really discussion, it's a question that even though we're making these recommendations, are there provisions in the budget for things like extra bike racks, widening of the roads, so on and so forth? So the recommendations that are being made, can we be assured that there'll be funding to implement them if it passes? Is that a question for Esther?
The only one that could even attempt to answer that would be Councilmember Kiina.
I'm just wondering, question that popped into my head.
That's an easy question. The answer is no. And the reason being, this is going to be a really tight budget. As many of you know, the highest priority right now is hazard pay. That is hazard pay relating to COVID for government employees. The administration is in negotiations. We currently have $80 million put aside. They're still negotiating with the unions. It can go as high as $150 million. That is not including our bus drivers and teamsters. And I know for myself, I don't care if it was in their union contracts. I want to help them because they were the ones most impacted in COVID among everyone. And so I guess I just want to say that it's going to be a tight year. So the answer is no, not for this year. And then how could we budget when we don't even know what's going to be in it? Right? So that's all. But it doesn't mean that in the future, if people would like to make improvements, that it can't be made. So I think first things first, we need to see what the end result will be from the Department of Transportation Services based on the recommendations from the community.
Well, we will certainly do all that we can to encourage appropriate funding for items that would deliver the most bang for the buck, certainly. Other board member discussion? Online, Kellyanne Kobayashi.
Hi. Yes, I had a question. I was wondering if this motion is recommending that like, I just wasn't sure because it just mentions a lot of different recommendations and comments. So this motion, is it recommending, the Kailua Neighborhood Board recommending that parking be closed every day? Is that what the recommendation is?
That's correct. Between the hours of 10 a.m. and 4 p.m. because the chronic parking demand signal far exceeds the parking supply before 10 a.m. and after 4 p.m., it can currently handle the demand. So it would be just like on a three-day weekend or the many months of water main repairs and other things that we've encountered the last couple of years.
I just wanted to comment that I think that would be, seems really rash. And I don't know if there's other options that could be explored besides just closing parking. I feel like closing parking every day isn't just going to impact tourists. Like, there are residents that might want to visit that beach. And why have beach access if they can't park and go there on their day off?
Yeah, I think we all share that desire. And I think we all want to pursue an all-of-the-above approach that would give us the parameters that would allow that to be restored. But the recommendation is, you know, as you've read it.
And then is there also a recommendation that we don't want electric bicycles to be part of this plan? Or, like, I wasn't understanding that part where it says the Kailua Neighborhood Board has not endorsed the use of electric bicycles? And there was another comment that said that, you know, bicycles won't impact traffic as much because they would use a bicycle lane. And I thought an electric bicycle would also use a bicycle lane, so is that not true?
Yeah, I think the idea on the e-bikes wasn't to not support them. It was to not overtly encourage them because of other issues still being resolved with ordinances and regulations on e-bikes that have not yet matured. And I think the word's "at the current time," I think we're also in there. But I'll turn it over to Travis Council to elaborate further.
Yeah, so Kelly, I think the comment you're pointing out is on the second page. But it is just a comment rather than a recommendation. So important to note, the recommendations are the ones that DTS or the plan would take into consideration on this. But it does currently comment this was largely due to resident concerns about either e-bikes or electric scooters or other mobility devices. Your point is correct that they would use bike lanes and paths. To Bill's point as well, there's still a little bit of gray zone or catch-up to the technology that some of the ordinances need to do. So it is just a comment within our comments, not an actual recommendation.
Thank you.
All right, any other board member discussion? I'd like to open it up for resident discussions. Please come to the microphone and if you're willing, identify yourself and let us know what your questions, comments, and concerns are.
Here we go. Okay, my name is Tom Sestir, President of Lanikai Association. Okay, my name is, my name is Tom Sestir, President of the LaniKai Association. With, together with LaniKai Association, Bluestone condominium, A'auha Public Charter School, Mid-Pacific Country Club, LaniKai Canoe Club, Okaloa Fishing Club. We believe that we represent well over 1,000 houses. In fact, over the last decade, we've inspected this parking. Sure you all are aware, maybe some of you have actually been stuck in the, in the traffic chain. We have had a significant experience with our parking issues, and we have, during the COVID period, we actually had about a two-year period where there was no parking at all 24 hours a day. And then with the order of water supply issue, it was much limited. That has been the only thing that's actually worked. So we, of course, recommend that you vote in favor of the Traffic Committee's proposal. So in fact, today, we have represented, so with LaniKai Canoe Club, Bluestone condominium, Okaloa Fishing Club, Impact Country Club here in present. Here today, but they, they all have concurred with our position in this matter. But you mentioned about the bike racks. We, we actually, as an association, supplied bike racks. And now many of them were, in fact, all but one have been destroyed by illegal parking. But we would be willing to do that again, look into that, do that again on our part. And as most of you know, LaniKai Park is probably the only privately-owned park in the state of Hawaii that is open to the public. We, and likewise, all the beach accesses, we own them. It's landfall, we own it. So in our, in our entire history, and we are in our 100th year this year, LaniKai's, 100th year of selling, we have never shut off those beach accesses. We allow the public to use our parks, our park. We maintain the park, we pay the insurance, which, believe me, I have to sign the checks, so it's, it's hefty, putting your insurance in play. We maintain the beach, we maintain, we maintain the beach accesses. The city has easement drainage over three of them. Fortunately, they're supposed to maintain them, but they don't. And in fact, the only one that is shut off right now is one that the city has not allowed us to reopen because of all that building. It's deteriorating, and I believe it's a safety net. You all know the story is here. We have lived through this decade. We're not talking about just annoyances, we're talking about life and death at times. We can, we can be here hours telling anecdotes, you're Mrs. But it's, think about those of you who have little kids at school who can't get picked up. Some of us who are of a certain age, you have to make a doctor's appointments a month in advance, you can't make airport runs, forget. You just can't, these are things that impact us on a daily basis. Believe that our proposal has proven to be successful. Our proposal has proven to be, we got, we've got some people out here, proposal has proven to be successful. Best option for the health and safety of ordinary people. Our proposal, council proposal, back problems, that's paddles, permit, sunrise and evening beach coverage, who have wise residents, visitors, access, our beach and the pillbox trail, minimizing our safety. So we strongly urge you to support this proposal. Thank you.
Donna Wong?
What would you think of a shuttle to bring in people who want to go to the pillbox?
So, that's, that's an interesting point because the, but first of all, bus ridership has been up on that. But, you know, we have a significant problem anyway with commercial activity at the beach. We, we have people talking things, selling things, and this is, this is, this is our public beach, this shouldn't be made into a commercial thing. I, we, we strongly believe that increased bus ridership, bus routes, I mean, that's a number of bus routes through LaniKai. Now, 671 would definitely be a help. And like during COVID, for example, when no one could come in at all, buses were pretty well filled. And if you ever been on the LaniKai bus in the morning, there's no one there in the middle of the day, you know, you know, so. But that has something, that's something that has to be advertised a lot, especially to the people who go to, I blew a town, and instead of getting in a car, I was driving in a car. Said, you know what, this isn't about people coming, this is about cars coming. That's our problem. But, but the long story short, I, I can, I can pretty much say that, I think I speak such and so, that we'd be, we'd be opposed to private enterprise, but here to be commercial activity chunks as opposed to a bus.
If I could rephrase the question a little bit. Donna Wong's question was pertaining to the pillbox, and I think your response is you wouldn't want to see multiple commercial operators to the pillbox. But, but let me, you know, it's all in how the question's asked. Let me rephrase it. Or I, maybe I'm not rephrasing it, maybe I'll ask a different question. The Kailua Neighborhood Board has recommended to DLNR that they have an offsite check-in and an advanced reservation system for the pillbox, something like a storefront near Long's or something like that to, to, to get the advanced reservation, sign the liability waiver, get a video and get indoctrinated, and then have a shuttle operated under that reservation system by DLNR to shuttle people directly from the storefront check-in to the trailhead and back.
It's a significantly different matter. That might be something we would, I'd have to talk to her, that's something that would be more acceptable. And honestly, that's, the city and the state have to work together with this because that, of course, the DLNR, that's, that's their pullover there, right? So that would be something, and of course, even the use of A'auha School for parking, maybe on weekends, you know, for, maybe that's what we're thinking of besides Kailua Town, Bill, I'm not sure, but something else.
So one more comment. I'm, are you aware that DLNR is going to do an EIS?
Yes.
Okay. That might be something that we would comment on in the EIS.
Carol Minashiro?
Hey, Tom. From a budgetary standpoint, other than the bike racks, which you indicated that the association is willing to potentially pay for, and then parking signs and various other kinds of signs, of course, there's the restroom, which is a recommendation or, for future. What other kind of budgetary impediments would there be to getting the current plan as recommended, you know, started and, and implement it?
City budget or LaniKai Association budget? So let's see you know, LaniKai Association, it's not, we're not a homeowners association, we're completely voluntary. But we have, we have 70-something percent of our homeowners who voluntarily give money to our association, maintenance of our park. And quite frankly, you know, we're a close nation, I think people know. We're geographically bound, but one way in, and so we have, we have a relationship with each other, we see each other every day, everyone's welcome, so we have that going for us in, in terms of volunteerism too. So all these things that I mentioned earlier, that we make, that must, almost all that is done by volunteers. And in fact, everything is done by volunteers. So, I mean, we don't, it's not like we're real deep pocket, but we, we have asked, bought, to show you, tell you how it works. We, the association, bought bike racks, Okaloa Fishing Club, who have some skills in that regard, put them in. So we work together, our various groups. Same thing with the canoe club, they also maintain park, maintenance aspect of their, you know, there are tenants of ours at our park, they also maintain. In fact, hopefully, John Bodie will talk about our relationship, because we go back to the 52, John. If you don't, if you don't know, John and his brother are quarterman of all fame, and LaniKai Canoe Club is really owned all over. We thought, we, the reason we came up with some of this is we, so we wanted to protect that, so we wanted to protect the people, we have a fishing club guys here too, wanted to protect them, their, their access to the, to LaniKai for fishing. If you've been there in the morning, I don't know if you're a morning person there, I have a whole bunch of people outside LaniKai, I'm looking back. That, it's just on LaniKai Canoe Club, there was like, John was there, two or three other smaller canoe clubs who also had their boats on the beach too. So, in fact, was, because the, now that we're doing the rock mitigation, you're probably aware, signs weren't, no parking signs in LaniKai, not white wreck. So in order to protect our paddlers, we just temporarily allowed them, our paddlers and, and LaniKai Canoe Club and those other two clubs whose names I really don't know, but we let them park in our park. There is no working to make, and hoping that they have signed the wreck. Yes, we're, and you know, also, the proposals made by the, the city on February 27th, which some of you must have attended, if you did attend, we were far and away most accommodating with the proposal. Everybody, almost everybody there. Those are all, many of those aspirational things. We agree with very many of them, but unfortunately, person being, I blew a town, unless there are guys like Travis who are fabulous bikers and such, are really into it, many people would just, people just get a car and drive in. And we have very many bike rental places, as you know, in, in Kailua. So, but mostly those are Asian tourists opposed to people from Waikiki, for example. So.
Thank you. My sense is that fairly cost-effective and inexpensive kind of associated cost paint for the, for the roadway signs, and you could already kind of move forward with getting some sort of relief to the LaniKai residents with the current proposal.
I, I've got to tell you that we were, at that February 27th meeting, Roger Morton, who's the head of Department of Transportation Services, made it pretty clear that they wanted to do away with the three-way, three-day special enforcement. So that was, yes, made it really pretty clear. So that's really troublesome for us, that's going back. But again, we, we agree with many of those proposals, they're aspirational. We, we would love it if that would really, if that would work. Right now, it's not, that's not, and I think we all know.
Okay. Well, hello, Tom. Next, community comment.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mike Rosen. I'm the chairman of the Traffic Committee for the LaniKai Association. I've been working on this issue for over a decade. Some of you are recognized from when we started on this 11 years ago, so I want to thank you for your continued attention to this. Over the years, in working with the city council and the Department of Transportation, we made incremental steps in trying to help with the parking, traffic issues that we face, the disruption to the community, and a variety of other things as you're all well aware of. What I wanted to stress about the plan that is being recommended by the, your Traffic Committee, and I hope you can favorably consider it, is that this plan that we're proposing that is being looked at by you really tries to draw a balance, as one of your board members was talking about. Well, it's closed from 10 to 4, nobody can park there. We had almost two continuous years of no parking in LaniKai, mostly from 10 to 4, sometimes all day during COVID. And we promoted hike, bike, or bus, and believe it or not, people did hike, bike, or bus in. And that was a good two-year span that exemplified how people can find their way to LaniKai. Now, we all face this problem, as you know, from Kailua Beach Park all the way to LaniKai. So it's not just us, it's all of us together. The Windward Side is one of the most popular attractions on the island. But by drawing a balance from 10 to 4, which tends to be our peak hours, as Bill Hicks has pointed out, the number of cars there far exceed, far exceed the number of parking places. And when somebody drives over the hill or comes from some other place, they're going to park no matter what. And we've asked them why they're parking illegally, and they'll tell you, for $35 ticket, what, that's like, you know, getting a parking spot in a, in a parking lot. What we've found is that most of the people that come and use our beach, and this is where the balance comes in, the Windward Side people, the kapuna, the paddlers, the swimmers, the hikers, the snorklers, the fishermen, they tend to come in the morning and they tend to come in the afternoon. Our peak hours from 12 to 4, we, we don't, we don't have paddling and we don't have snorkeling and those kinds, well, we have guests who snorkel, but by and large, that tends to be turned over to people who are, are visitors. So we, we feel it's a, it's a balance where all the local people who use LaniKai, as they do the Kailua Beach Park, will still have access to it. We're not looking to close off all the parking on the loop because we realize how important that parking is in the morning and the afternoon. A lot of your kapuna and our kapuna, which I guess I won now, drive down and park on the loop so they can walk to the beach, it's not that far. And we want to accommodate that, and that's, that's what this, what this does. So in closing, I'm hoping you can give it your favorable consideration. We view it as an incremental step, just expanding what is currently in place, and that's the special enforcement district, expanding it from three-day holidays to every day. And the reason why we chose 4 o'clock instead of 3 o'clock, in case you're wondering, is that in our consultation with A'auha School and other schools, we have learned that they have a lot of problems in the afternoon with their kids coming home on bikes and walking with, with too many cars. So what the 4 o'clock extension from 3 does, it protects the children better and takes more cars off the road, because cars, at least in LaniKai, tend to park in the bike lane as well. Thank you very much.
Well, hello, Mike. Well, hello. Yes, sir.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm David Thompson, I'm the president of the Bluestone Association, and I've been president for about a year and I've got one more year left. But I wanted to thank the Neighborhood Board for letting us present our, our cause. But I do support, and Bluestone supports the LaniKai proposal for the Department of Transportation Services. present our, our cause. But I do support, and Bluestone supports the Lonikai proposal for the Department of Transportation Services. And I think there was a question about having a trolley or a shuttle system to drop off hikers at the Makai side of the pillbox?
Just for the pillbox, just to go after the pillbox, turn around and leave.
That's at the top of the hill?
Yes.
Right. Just so everyone knows, that's actually private, that's a private road.
And they stop at the bottom and everybody walks up.
I, I understand, but from the entrance of mid-pack all the way up the hill, that's a private road. And the cul-de-sac there is not really designed to have all the Uber drivers go at a high rate of speed up the hill, turn around, drop off their passengers. I think on Christmas vacation recently, we had a school bus up there. I don't know how they turned around. But it's not really meant for a drop-off. It, it's used that way, but it's not really intended that way. Not supposed to be, so.
So I'm, I'm aware of that a private road and a small turnaround. I was thinking, and I didn't say that, was to drop off on the road and then everybody walks up the street and then they catch the trolley to go back.
Right.
That's it.
And not, not, not bad thought. There's just not a lot of room even on that road once you turn off, the, the main road, the loop road. There's just not a lot of room there. So. We have to take any questions if anyone has any. Thank you for your time.
Mahalo.
Thank you, Chairman, for all your work and all the people of the Kaihulu Neighborhood Board for so much, so much effort into this. I'm, I'm Chuck Gray. I've been working on this project for over eleven years also, like Mr. Kosa. I have a different opinion of what should be done. Uh, my, my opinion is, excuse me, back in May fifth of twenty twenty, oh, fourteen, back in, uh, May of twenty fourteen, the Kaihulu Neighborhood Board no parking both sides of the loop in Lonikai. A lot of people on the board don't realize that was actually passed, but it never was completed. It was for both sides. And at that time, they decided, the association, Lonikai Association decided they would try one side, see how it worked, then they would do the other side. But over ten years have gone by and that's never happened. So I personally and the people of community have suggested that we do no parking both sides of the Lonikai Loop. Then twenty-four hours, seven days a week, kind of like Kalahia. Kalahia has no parking on both sides of the street all the way to Kanyo Marine Base, right up. Tsunami zone. Think that would be nice to be able to get out in the Lonikai. I think it would be a great thing to be able to have our emergency vehicles have clean access down the two main in and out. There's only one way in, one way out of Lonikai. And all the propositions that are being placed before us right now are going to take a really long time. They're going to take a whole bunch of money and probably ten years from now, we'll all be still talking about this because I don't see any money for this project. And I think everybody has a whole bunch of different views. But if we just put up the signs just around the loop, vice take them down, whatever happens if it's the ten AM to four PM, seven days a week, forever, uh, and everybody wants that, they can take the no parking signs off and put those signs up. And it won't cost the city that much and we could move on with it. And I just wanted to show some of the pictures. For people who want to pass them around to take a look. I just think it's an easy plan and I don't have any problem with all the other suggestions. Whatever the community decides, I would just like to see a fire truck and an ambulance people come in. I've seen it come in down Mokalua the wrong way to put out a fire. And I, I've seen, and then the fire, and they're very competent, but as you can see from the statistics, it's getting harder and the response time is getting longer. There's more people coming there and weather's getting colder. So personally, I think this would work and it's not that expensive to do and they could do it for the end of the year. I don't think any of the other things that would be enough are going to happen for a while. And if they do, I, I got no problem. I'd just like to be able to see trucks, the, our trucks get in and ambulances get in and then get out. And I would like to get out once in a while too, but walk or ride or, you know, whatever. I'm not that important. So anyway, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And it's just one view. And like I said, drive down around the Lonikai Loop and you drive out down Kalahia. It's working for them. Great. Thank you very much.
Mahalo. Next.
I'm John Foddy, represent Lonikai Kanu Club. Um, just, uh, wanted to say that, um, we've been working with the Lonikai Association for about a decade, uh, trying to solve these problems. Uh, I'm not going to get into a, a lot of the detail about why we need, um, uh, some traffic management. But, um, the fact of the matter is that we have a big footprint, uh, just our club. So there's, as Tom had said, there's about three clubs that operate out of, of Kaihulu. Well, there's three. Um, our club is by far the biggest. We're about five hundred and fifty members and, uh, we do our best to minimize our impact on the community in every way we can, including, uh, you know, encouraging alternative, uh, uh, transportation, uh, you know, rotating our schedules, uh, all kinds of, of different things. But no matter what, we need a lot of parking. And, um, we don't need it in the middle of the day. Our, our paddlers are either early in the morning or later in the afternoon. Our kids' programs start at about four. So this really works well for us. The, um, program or the, the, um, recommendation by, uh, the LTMP, the, the DTS's idea is going to put the Kanu Clubs out of business. Um, it's, if it eliminates that much parking, uh, all the time on Mokalua and Ala Papo, we're done. And, uh, and that's just the facts of it. Um, one thing I wanted to point out that nobody seems to be, um, you know, considering is that this is not just a Lonikai problem. This is a Kaihulu problem. And, um, and whatever we implement in Lonikai, uh, it needs to be considered in the, in the bigger picture because the problem is just as bad along Kaihulu, you know, Kawailoa Road, uh, by Kaihulu Beach Park and, and, and all of that. The, the, the traffic is ridiculous over there too. And what we do in Lonikai maybe ought to be considered to be extended out to that area. And if, and if, if, if the LTMP guys or the DTS implements their plan and, uh, you know, um, uh, and tries to do something similar in, uh, along Kawailoa, those Kanu Clubs are going to be out of business too. And that's thousands of people. So, um, that's about all I got to say. Thanks.
Mahalo, John. Next.
My name is, uh, John Bell. Many of you know me as Lee, um, fourth generation John. So you go John at our house and everybody looks at you. Um, I'm here to represent the Mokalua Fishing Club. Um, our charter was aborted and our constitution was approved in nineteen fifty. We're seventy-four years old. Um, I represent a hundred and thirty residents of Lonikai and they are supporting the Lonikai Association, uh, in their ten to four request. Um, in reality, I walked the beach the other day, um, noon. Um, I counted five hundred and seventy-three people on the beach. I didn't even count anybody in the water. As a fisherman, um, I'd be ludicrous for me to be down there from ten to, the fish aren't there. We're early morning, we're late evening. Um, and, uh, so the reality is the ten to four works for the sanctity of the neighborhood and also for our fish. Uh, we're starting to get, um, support from Ayana and Wainapa Napa as far as looking at models that are working. Um, we're under attack as far as, um, our nearshore fishermen. We need to start thinking about that. I appreciate John bringing up the point that this is not just happening to us in Lonikai. Let's take the blinders off and see how far this is happening. Um, I have copies that we submitted and, um, I'll be happy to give them to you later, Bill. So thank you for your time.
Mahalo. Yes, sir.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Ron Haas. I'm the chairman manager and chief operating officer of the Kukutu Country Club. Um, I'm here in regards, I think everything you're talking about here is mostly about safety. I know people talk about parking or missing appointments. But at the end of the day, I, I've been here about two and a half years now. I just came back. My dad used to own a unit in Bluestone that was still leasehold, which was in the eighties and nineties. So I've been around here for a little bit. But I think coming back from California, which we all experienced now and also we experienced Maui, when situation happens, when the emergency happens, he's trying to get everybody out of Lonikai. I think that's the biggest thing we worry about. And we already have, I think it's seven hundred homeowners in Lonikai and you're throwing in, I heard, three hundred and thirty-three cars on a side road. You're throwing a thousand plus cars out to leave at one moment if, if the moment happens. I think that's the biggest concern. And I just heard that it's bigger than just Lonikai. It also goes into Kaihulu because we all know that the, the gridlock happens by the Kaihulu Beach Park, by the bridge and by the turnaround. So I think it's bigger than just, oh, okay, I missed an appointment or I cannot get, get my tee time, whatever it is. It's when the moment happens, when we have to evacuate, that then we cannot figure out how we're going to do it. So I've been working with Lonikai Association, with Bluestone and Kahao in regards to emergency preparedness. Coming from California, like I said, I actually started this, uh, plan with Lonikai. As soon as I came here and I saw one road in, one road out, oh my hell, how are we going to get out of here if it happens? And I actually was part of an evacuation drill in East Bay where we actually worked on contra-flow traffic to get people out on the freeway and everything else. But that's our biggest challenge because it's not just Lonikai. The gridlock happens right outside of it. So the cars being inside Lonikai adds to the challenge. So I think people have to understand it's not just the homeowners want to have the parking back. It's more about, I heard multiple times is, and I'm sorry, my French here, when the shit hits the fan, how are we going to get out of here? And that's my biggest worry. We talked about two thousand people going to the pillbox. You just need one cigarette to do something wrong. I'm looking from clubhouse up on the hill and it gets brown during the summertime. And that's where my worry is. And that's why we started off the evacuation plan. Having said that, as you probably all know, we have, uh, April fourteenth, our Lonikai Emergency Preparedness Fair at the Lonikai Park, where we're going to work with the associations, for the Lonikai Association, Bluestone, Kahao, in regards to teaching and educating our homeowners how to prepare themselves. What happens? What should I do? And also we're working on, working with the local agencies of how are we going to work it when we need to evacuate? But the problem is we throwing three hundred, four hundred, five hundred cars on top of the homeowner's cars trying to leave. That's where the challenge comes in. Questions? Thank you.
Mahalo.
Thank you for letting me speak. Uh, my name is Ralph Gray. I'm a resident of Lonikai. My family was, came to Lonikai in like nineteen thirty-five. Grandfather's Cliff Weaver. Billy Weaver's my uncle. Star Weaver's nephew. Uh, I was raised there all my life and I've watched the whole thing happen from a little kid. I was driving both directions, both sides. There was really no one in Lonikai. It was an amazing place to be, you know, safe and walk around. I now have my family in Lonikai and my kids there and, uh, seen the traffic. I've been stuck in the traffic. I've, Lily's been stuck in traffic for over an hour trying to get to Lonikai, which is crazy. I, I actually got on my bike, rode to the doctor, rode back to my house. The traffic was still blocked. I actually rode my bike to my doctor's office in Kaihulu. I had to go to the emergency center. So I've been affected by it directly. I support this program and, and I, I'm a fisherman too. I'm a diver. I live by the water. I fish, dive, everything, paddle canoes. But people who really come to Lonikai or who are using the ocean for fishing are there in the morning. And then they leave or they come the afternoon. I see them. They come right by my house. They go down six AM, whip, appeal, diving. Yes, some people come in the app, in the middle section, but most of the fishermen and divers are coming in the game. Most people want to walk the beach too in the same thing. So I think it's a really good program. And I think it's like they're saying, we got to do something, right? It's just talk, talk, talk for ten years. Something's got to be tried. And if we try this, if it doesn't work, what have we lost? It's not a big, big case of anything. So I would just say that I'm also a member of the Mokalua Fishing Club. I, we support Bluestone's Lonikai Association. Ten AM to four PM to me would have the biggest effect.
Mahalo.
Hi, my name is Rob. I'm at KAF. I'm not a resident in Lonikai, but I'm a resident of Kaihulu. And I love doing the pillboxes. And I had a question on the permit. Or I, I think I've heard something about having to sign up to do it. And I'm wondering if that is, does that include, well, do we have to do that? I hope we don't.
Yes, it was, uh, yeah, we were referring to an earlier recommendation from the neighborhood board to the DLNR for, uh, managed access. And, uh, it's going to be up to DLNR, but that was the input that we had provided, that there be an advanced reservation system. I'd probably have, uh, twenty or thirty-dollar fee for non-residents and probably free for Kamahaina. But that getting the reservation would be part of overall management of the trail and regulating the hours and, and, uh, managing the sustainable load on the trail. So as we envision the comment, yes, as DLNR takes that and develops that into their, as yet to be seen, managed access plan, we'll just have to wait and see. And whenever they do come out, there will be a comment period. All right. Are there any other, uh, community comments? So if we can wrap up the community comments, I'll then come back if there are any last minute board comments. Yes.
Aloha. My name's Andreas Hilkinger. My issue is not the Lonikai pillbox nor parking, but it is tangential. Uh, it goes back to the Kalapauai project. And I was wondering if anyone at DTS had provided any update as the construction seems to have slowed considerably. The six months, uh, early completion that we've been verbally promised does not appear to be coming to fruition at all. And I imagine the traffic that will be increased for the Lonikai residents, uh, once they move on to in front of a Kalapauai itself, uh, will be felt. Also, I remember last month we talked about the, uh, the Lonikai Road itself, uh, being closed down into one direction of traffic at the same time as the roundabout continues. Uh, and I was just wondering if anyone had heard any updates as to that or if anyone would be held accountable once they go past the two-year completion date, uh, which will be at the end of November, of course.
Uh, mahalo. We've been asking for periodic, uh, updates from, uh, DTS and that'll be a specific ask for our next month's meeting. Okay, uh, saved rounds from, uh, board members. Final comments. Josiah Cow.
Yeah, just, um, glad, um, John brought up the point of Kawailoa Road. Even if, if this is about safety, if this is about, um, safety. Kawailoa Road isn't a part of this. And instead of having two thousand drivers spread out in area, you're going to have two thousand drivers just trying to find parking at the Kaihulu Beach Park, which is going to make it even more congested to get in line. So that's something that, you know, everybody should think about. And if it does extend to Kaihulu Beach Park and the, and the parks, um, that could maybe be a place for the buses to turn around in that parking lot. Hikers can take into Lonikai, the hikers. And, um, there's one thing that everybody needs to realize also is all goes out walked in here are physically disadvantaged people. We also have to think of them and their parking. So just a few comments for everybody to, I think, like, if you're giving comments.
Yeah, our, our comments, uh, were limited to areas within Lonikai. If you'd like to offer an amendment to add a comment on Kawailoa Road, which is that little street by the exit of, uh, Kaihulu Beach Park, which has been included in the special management district managed by DTS on the long weekends. Um, that may have been an oversight. And if you'd like to offer an amendment to add that as a comment, we could entertain that.
Mr. Chair, I think that's something that we should seriously think.
Mr. Chair, I think that's something that we should seriously think about. It's, we need to do a complete job, something that's piecemeal. But I really wanna take care of our motion. Is there a way that you can amend the motion to have DTS do a study also, comprehensive study?
We can amend it to add a comment on Kailua Road, if, lower road, if someone would like to make that motion.
Just say, so moved.
Okay, so moved, and the comment would be to add that to no parking, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, the same as the recommendation for the rest of Lani Kai. So a motion has been made. Motion has been seconded by Levani Lipton. We now are on discussion on the amendment. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Okay, we'll call for the vote. This is to add... This is on the amendment. This is to have one addition to include the road, which is currently part of the SMA. Add that to our recommendation. Okay? Ready? We'll do a roll call vote. Josiah Cow? Yes. Travis Council?
Yes.
Yes. Amber Granite? Kellyanne Kobayashi? David Laia? Jade Lau? Yes. Mike Lee? Yes. Levani Lipton? Yes. Carol Mioshiro? Yes. Kayla Morrell? Kate Ryder?
Yes.
Yes. Claudine Tomasa? Yes. Steve Trecker? Yes. Evan Weber? Yes. Gary Weller? Yes. John White? Donna Wong? Yes. Jeff Suckernick? Yes. Chair votes yes. Okay, the amendment passes with unanimous approval of 14. Okay, are there any other remaining board member comments on the main motion? Levani Lipton?
This was already brought up by several different people, but I just wanna underscore the point that this is not just a Lani Kai or Kaohao issue. I was at that transportation meeting, and it does impact the community at large. I learned at that meeting that there are paddlers who are from outside Kailua that paddle for Lani Kai Canoe Club. So this does impact everyone who uses this most beautiful part of Kailua. The other thing is managed access. We really need to do this. If Haena and Haleakala can do it, we can do it here in Kaohao. It's way overdue. Needs to be done for the pillbox. And my other final comment is what Josiah had referenced about folks with disabilities. That was the only thing that really stood out to me, that that is a population who has special needs, and we wanna make sure that they have access. And so I also just wanted to, you know, ensure that we're not leaving them out when it comes to things like parking bans, that maybe they can't travel on a shuttle or a bus, and so they have to come with their relatives in a car. And we wanna be able to facilitate their enjoying the beach as well.
Our recommendations include some designated handicap parking spots. Okay, any other discussion? Josiah Cow?
No, I just wanted to talk about the physically disadvantaged. Lani Kai is not really best beach for disabilities, because there's no really walkways. It'd be more for the Kailua Beach area. The shutting is down. There needs to be more parking stalls. But there is walkways where they can be on top of their wheelchairs and stuff, so. Something that's a comment.
Any other comments? Evan Weber?
Cool. Yeah, I just wanted to get a word in, because I've been working on this issue for a while. And it is personal for me. I was born and raised in Kaohao. What many people know as Lani Kai. And yeah, so my family's lived there for over 35 years. I'm younger than that, so, been my whole life. And yeah, I think I just wanted to say that Kellyanne's comments, kind of realizing the implications of, oh, yeah, restricting access like to other local residents to this area that so many people enjoy. And the emotions that I kinda saw you going through on that, like, I am right there with you. And it really sucks to be at this point. But, you know, the reality of the situation is that access has been restricted to local residents for a long time now. For the last 10 to 15 years, since the advent of social media, Instagram, Obama's vacationing there, et cetera, it's been a nightmare to go into this beach. And what that's meant for local people, a lot of my friends never wanna come into the loop. They'd much rather go to the beach elsewhere, because it's just not an enjoyable place. And when you walk down the beach now, you don't see, during the peak hours on a weekend, you don't see a lot of local people there. You see a lot of partiers with ABC bags and ABC towels and all sorts of stuff. And I really do think that this proposal, as Mike said, is a balanced approach to manage the health and safety of residents, but also restore access for local people as well during the times that local people actually use the beach. And there are other ways to get in during that 10 to 4 period if people wanna go to. So, you know, the last thing that I just wanna say is, I shared this already with some people, but it is really a life or death situation, and I experienced that personally a couple of years ago. My mother, who also lives, yeah, who I was living with, she had a stroke. And this was on the day after Thanksgiving in 2022. It was one of the most sunny days of the year. It was a beautiful holiday day. And normally, on a sunny weekend day, what that means is that you can get stuck in traffic in the loop for one hour, three hours. Sometimes for some of us, it's even been six hours or eight hours. And that actually happened later that year, just a couple of months later. Thanksgiving, it was the day after Thanksgiving. And what that meant is that it was a special enforcement district day, a three-day weekend. My mother made it to the hospital. And what the doctors told me is that if I had brought her in maybe an hour later, that she would have been dead or paralyzed all the way throughout her body. She was still severely damaged by her stroke, and I got her in there basically at the last moment possible. And luckily, she's made an amazing recovery and every now and then makes it down to the beach herself these days. But if that special enforcement district policy, 10 to 3:30, 10 to 4, whatever it was, that restricting that access primarily of tourists during peak hours on those holiday days was not in place, I don't know that my mother would be alive today, and luckily she is. So yeah, heaven forbid, like Ron said, something on a more cataclysmic, community-wide scale, like what happened in Lahaina, were to happen to us in Kaohao or Kailua, which is totally possible. But it already is a life or death issue for our residents. I got lucky on the side of life a couple of Thanksgivings ago, but other people might not got so lucky sometimes. So.
Mahalo. All right. We'll call for the motion. This is on the main motion as amended. Josiah Cow? Yes. Travis Council? Yes. Amber Granite? Kellyanne Kobayashi?
Abstain.
Abstain. David Laia? Jade Lau? Yes. Mike Lee? Yes. Levani Lipton? Yes. Carol Mioshiro? Yes. Kayla Morrell? Kate Ryder?
Yes.
Yes. Claudine Tomasa? Yes. Steve Trecker? Yes. Evan Weber? Yes. Gary Weller? Yes. John White? John White? Donna Wong? Yes. Jeff Suckernick? Yes. Chair votes yes. The motion carries by a vote of 14 in favor with one abstention. Okay, this is all necessary discussion, one hour. Important topic that has taken a decade to get here. I really appreciate everyone's efforts, including Councilmember Kiaina, the City Council, DTS, Lani Kai Association residents, Kailua residents. It's been a team effort, and appreciate it. But I'll caution, we have six more motions. We cannot spend an hour each. The next motion is the Kailua Neighborhood Board requests that the Department of Parks and Recreation close Kailua Beach Park with suggested closed hours from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM, at least one weeknight per week to facilitate necessary cleaning and maintenance. Overnight camping is not authorized unless DPR issues a special permit. Even when the park is closed, individuals will be allowed to traverse the park to access the beach, ingress and egress from the ocean, and use the bike lane for walking and biking through the park. This is Parks and Recreation's motion. Evan Weber, anything you'd like to add to this?
Okay. Hello, Chair of the Parks Committee here. So we have, this is an issue that came up from the community. In consultation with HPD, we wanna maintain access to our parks as much as possible. We'll also make sure that the laws that we have on the books are followed and have the ability to be enforced. And also that the safety of residents is prioritized. And we have had kind of increased campers in the parks that have been breaking the law by camping in the parks. And there have been some safety concerns that community residents have brought to us around around that as well, people being assaulted and things of that nature by some of these folks. HPD has been working to address the issue and has made a lot of progress. But in order to actually make sure that people are not keeping up permanent encampments in the parks, they do need to be closed. So we want to give the option for the Department of Parks and Recreation to close the parks on a semi, basically in the evening, once or twice a week in order to be able to address that, and basically to be able to seize property within the limit of the law, which they're not currently able to do. So that's the background behind this resolution.
Any discussion on the board online? Chair? John White?
Sorry, gang, I had technical issues earlier with this WebEx. So this has obviously been a hot topic for some time. I have mixed emotions about this. And I don't think the masses should have to change their lives for a very small group, which can be dealt with and currently is being dealt with in certain ways. But that's neither here nor there. I spoke with, I spoke with HPD, and they are asking for support with this. So that's the only reason I'm supporting this. Up until then, I was definitely opposed to any type of closure. If it is once a week or twice a week, and it doesn't impede the the Kailua residents, the original Kailua residents, the families that should be there. And it helps them to get rid of these guys that are, whatever you wanna call it, making trouble. But they're nuisance. I'm for it. I just, I just hope that this doesn't go into some kind of, you know, blanket shutdown like all other parks. It's been noted before, all other parks are closed. Kailua is a special magic place. That's why it's different. So I'll just urge everybody, let's tread softly on this, let's make the right decisions. Once it, once we do things, sometimes it's hard to go back on it. But for the once, once a week or twice a week, I'm on full support of that. And let's, let's keep Kailua, Kailua. That's, that's the point of this board, guys, and appreciate everybody being here. Sorry I couldn't be there in person. Thank you, guys.
Jade Lau?
I just wanna clarify. Based on what we have written, we're just enforcing the rules that are already in place, right? The beach park is closed at certain hours. That's why they put the chain up across the parking lot, so you can't park there. It, this just seems so common sense. We're not closing the sand and the ocean. It clearly states egress to get to the ocean and back is still allowed. This is just enforcement to enforce the rules that are already in place. Kailua doesn't have overnight camping.
Well, technically, that's not correct. The parking lot is closed at 10:00 PM. Certain restrooms are closed at 10:00 PM. Certain others are closed earlier than that. So restrooms and parking lot are closed, but the beach park technically has no closure hours currently. And so this proposal is at least one weeknight a week to close it from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM with the various exceptions that have been enumerated by Laura Thalen.
So we're gonna close it so they actually can access things to clean them and do the other things we've asked? Once a week?
At, at least once a week.
Okay, board, this seems really common sense. I just wanted to be clear that I understood, so we can all understand. Thanks.
Mahalo. Other board comments? Donna Wong?
Who is gonna, who's gonna decide on the one night? What is that one night? So?
This is our request to Department of Parks and Recreation. It's our request to them, and then they would determine what they wanna do with it. So it'd be Department of Parks and Recreation that would determine what night or nights.
Okay, so there would be an established, I would support an established Tuesday every week instead of a rolling day.
So we discussed that, Donna. I think that we basically wanted to keep some flexibility. I think we understand what we're trying to achieve here, which is like what John said, basically to be the least disruptive to the way that Kailua people use the parks already. So like, it's not gonna be Saturday night or Sunday night when our canoe clubs are like loading up there or, you know, like when we have like cultural activities or Hulu Hala there or whatever, you know. It'd probably be a Monday or a Monday and Tuesday, something like that. But we wanted to just maintain some flexibility to kind of work it out with HPD and DPR to see what actually will get the job done.
Other board comments? Gary Weller?
Could you discuss like three-day weekends? You know, so that the day that you're gonna clean the park doesn't fall on a Friday or a Monday, when there may be a three-day weekend?
We did not discuss that. The proposal is one night a week, every week. Yeah. And the idea being that's enough to keep people from being there for three months doing their thing or whatever.
Other comments? Online? John White.
Yeah, the meeting that I spoke with HPD, we kind of went over how it would help them the most. And usually camping two days is usually the kind of the standard before you got to pull another permit, maybe three days. But we talked about a Wednesday would give given of gap. And I think a Wednesday would get us away from a Friday or a Monday being a three-day weekend, like Gary said. Think that's a good, good point you made, Gary. Like a Wednesday in the middle of the week, I don't think that would really affect too many people. Again, we just need to make sure this, this works the best for the mass and does it, we cannot tailor to the, that small minority group that's causing us to get to this point. Thank you.
Okay. Mahalo. Other board comments? Donna Wong.
Yes, and I would like to make an amendment to the motion that we include. According to the board, that the preferred night would be a Wednesday to avoid the three-day weekend issue.
Second.
Okay, so it's been an amendment has been proposed that instead of saying at least one weeknight per week to specify Wednesday. And that has been seconded by John White. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Lavani Lipton.
I agree with Donna's point, except that I don't think we can tell HPD and Parks when they can operate. I mean, I know they have other things to do. Maybe we can make it as a request, but they have a schedule. So I don't know if it's fair for us to impose that on them. It's just my thought.
Other discussion on the amendment? Evan Weber?
Yeah, so to an extent, that's true. I think in this scenario, they are actually looking for that from us, Lavani. Like this is one of those things where, again, a lot of other parks have it closed every night. They have not, DPR has not done that because they know that that is not the preference of the Kailua community, which has been expressed multiple times by the Kailua Neighborhood Board. So they're waiting for a thumbs up from us to move on this, on this particular issue. That said, I also support the spirit of what Donna and John are getting at. But because that is the circumstance, I'd really rather just talk it out with them and find the day of the week that is best. So I would support an amendment. I would, you know, I, I, I don't think it does us any favors to really limit this amendment anymore at this point. So I would vote against this amendment, just to say that.
John White.
Chair, is Officer Atkins still online?
He is. Officer Atkins.
Yes, it doesn't matter what day. For us, we, we change our schedules often. And so we just, we just need any day that works best for the neighborhood and we will make that day work. So it doesn't matter what day to us whatsoever. We just need one day a week.
Other discussion on the amendment? Donna, did you have more? Okay. Call for the Josiah.
Specifying a day. Specific day, but did you say? Is there a little bit more flexibility? Also, if you just say Wednesday, summertime also is different. Think the amendment, it's not, few knows the next day. Punctures that from Kailua me. Get their stuff down there early. Something to think about. Is a comment.
Okay, the, the, the motion is we're discussing the amendment, but the main motion says weeknight. Okay, if there's no more discussion on the amendment, we'll vote on the amendment. Josiah Akow.
Abstain.
Abstain. Travis Council? No. Amber Granite? Kellyanne Kobayashi?
Yes.
Yes. David Laia? Jade Lau? This is on the amendment to specify Wednesday. No. Mike Lee? No. Lavani Lipton? No. Carol Mioshiro? No. Kayla Morrell? Kate Ryder?
No.
No. Claudine Tomasa? No. Steve Trecker? No. Evan Weber?
No.
No. Gary Weller? Yes. John White?
Yes.
Yes. Donna Wong? Yes. Jeff Suckernick? No. Chair votes no. The amendment does not pass. Four four in favor, eleven opposed and one abstention. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Is there any community discussion?
Hi, Robin Metcalf, I just wanted to say I agree Josiah. I think if you have a set day, then the people, the individuals that are camping there, they'll just move out and they'll come back. So.
Well, I'm sure that whatever Department of Parks and Recreation comes up with will probably be permanent days because they're going to post signage. But and then it's not going to be practical to change the signage week by week. But anyway, this is a request to Department of Parks and Recreation. The, the next step, if this passes, would be to submit our request and then see what DPR comes up with. Okay, I call for the motion. This is the main motion. Josiah Akow?
Yes.
Yes. Travis Council? Yes. Amber Granite? Kellyanne Kobayashi?
Yes.
Yes. David Laia? Jade Lau? Yes. Mike Lee? Yes. Lavani Lipton?
Yes.
Yes. Carol Mioshiro? Yes. Kayla Morrell? Kate Ryder?
Yes.
Yes. Claudine Tomasa? Yes. Steve Trecker? Yes. Evan Weber? Yes. Gary Weller? Yes. John White?
Yes.
Yes. Donna Wong? Yes. Jeff Suckernick? Yes. Chair votes yes. The motion passes unanimously. Sixteen in favor. Next motion is the Kailua Neighborhood Board requests that the city and county of Honolulu, City Council, Mayor and Department of Parks and Recreation allocate the resources and staffing to install and regularly maintain and fill vandal-proof soap dispensers and electric hand dryers in all public restrooms in all DPR operated parks to ensure the public health and wellbeing of all residents and visitors and promote pleasant and enjoyable public spaces. Parks and Rec motion. Evan Weber, would you like to elaborate?
Yeah, first of all, just to close out that last convo, I just want to say I appreciate the feedback that we got in that discussion from board members and we'll definitely incorporate the slippery soap concerns and that Wednesday might be a good day in our, as we present and start the discussion with DPR and HPD. So thanks for that. This one, we've been asking for this for a while. This is a public health and safety concern for the neighborhood. Our public facilities should, and our public restrooms in those facilities should allow people to, you know, use them and be clean when they leave. And that is not the case here in Kailua despite this being a major tourist destination and revenue generator for our town. But it's not just a Kailua issue, it's a city and county issue. Other counties actually do do this. They've figured it out. So if they can figure it out in Maui in their public restrooms, I bet we can figure it out here. So we're just giving DPR, CNC, a little bit of nudge to do that. They've told us that the reason they haven't done it before is because people would break them. Hit a little Google, there's such thing as vandal-proof soap dispensers, they look pretty legit. They're not that expensive, seems like a worthy investment. So we're going to keep nudging and we do think the city is hearing on us on this. That's the context.
Yeah, I, I would add that online, we found vandal-proof, but also vandal-proof that carry a ten-year warranty against vandalism or theft.
There you go.
Very, very heavy duty. Okay. Discussion. Online? Any resident discussion? Call for the motion? Josiah Akow? Yes. Travis Council? Yes. Amber Granite? Kellyanne Kobayashi?
No.
No. David Laia? Jade Lau? Yes. Mike Lee? Yes. Lavani Lipton? Yes. Carol Mioshiro? Yes. Kayla Morrell? Kate Ryder?
No.
No. Claudine Tomasa? Yes. Steve Trecker? Yes. Evan Weber? Yes. Gary Weller? Yes. John White?
Yes.
Yes. Donna Wong? Yes. Jeff Suckernick? Yes. Chair votes yes. Motion carries fourteen to two. Next motion, the Kailua Neighborhood Board requests that the Department of Parks and Recreation install appropriate lighting to the Kailua Beach Park bike path to improve nighttime safety. Parks and Rec motion. Evan Weber, would you like to expand?
As previously discussed, Kailua Beach Park, magical place. There is an awesome bike path that was built there a while ago with the intention to increase the safety of our pedestrians and bikers. However, at night, it is pitch black in this area and therefore it's not particularly safe. So we could change that with a little bit of lighting and that's what we want to work with the city to do. That's the context. Just the last piece on the environmental thing that I'll name too is that the lights would be installed in a way that wouldn't create additional light pollution for seabirds. And there already are streetlights that are much higher and much brighter right there. So this wouldn't really be adding anything in addition to that. But just wanted to name that that is a serious thing that we considered here.
All right, that bike lane that runs parallel to the road and the, and the beach property is an essential transportation path between Lanikai and Palpoy Market in Kailua. Any discussion? Donna Wong?
What do you, what were you considered as appropriate lighting?
Yeah, so in the discussion, in the Parks Committee, some of the thoughts and ideas that were raised included lighting that was lower to the ground, but high enough to be functional. Perhaps just having it not be disturbing, perhaps utilizing the trees in some way, perhaps utilizing solar technologies. There wouldn't have to be a lot of additional wiring or electrical that was put in. But generally going for the least disturbance of the natural environment and the critters around there.
I'd be, I'd be much more comfortable with the motion if appropriate, that type of lighting was identified. Because what we may envision as appropriate, Parks Department has different ideas or one fits all when you have a pathway that needs to be lit at night. No idea what their standards are. And so I could see them proposing or starting on a project that has lighting that doesn't meet what we think is appropriate. So I'd be concerned, I'm really concerned about that, open-ended.
Lavani Lipton?
One of the things we talked about was perhaps there's some coconut trees, so putting like a light maybe fasten to the coconut tree, but I understand your point. We don't need a huge fluorescent thing, there's residents across the way. But I can tell you from personal experience, after paddling, when it's dark, sometimes I've been scared and I have avoided the bike path. And so I've actually walked like in the road towards oncoming traffic just because I want to be seen and I don't want to be in the dark by myself walking back to my car. So it is needed and that is, that is a route that a lot of us take when there's no beach park parking because of the tourists. So something needs to be done. But I agree with you that it needs to be environmentally sound and also take into consideration, you don't want it shining into the homes of the residents right across the street. I don't know how to phrase that in an amended motion, but.
Travis Council?
First off, I definitely support this motion. I think to Donna's point and Lavani's, given that this is the initial request for this and not a project that already exists, there's going to be ample, ample opportunity for public input and environmental concerns and those types of things if this project was to move forward. I would caution overly complicating the motion. I think acknowledging that we want to see an improvement on the bike path is probably the first step. I did want to add that there are a lot of federal funding opportunities for improvement for this type of thing. So I know funding's always a concern, but I can list, I wrote four different grants that we could apply for this. So funding, funding I don't think should be a primary concern. But I would say keep it simple for this initial request and then we can have additional public comment if it comes to reality.
Okay, any other discussion? Gary Weller?
A quick, quick Google showed fifty different types of bike lighting, some that would not be appropriate. So having some idea what the lighting would be like would be important.
Okay. Let's take a vote on the motion and depending on the outcome, figure out what's next. Josiah Akow? Abstain. Travis Council? Yes. Amber Granite? Kellyanne Kobayashi?
Abstain.
Abstain. David Laia? Jade Lau? Yes. Mike Lee? Yes. Lavani Lipton? Yes. Carol Mioshiro? Yes. Kayla Morrell? Kate Ryder?
Abstain.
Abstain. Claudine Tomasa? Yes. Steve Trecker? Yes. Yes. Evan Weber? Yes. Gary Weller? Yes. John White?
Yes.
Yes. Donna Wong? Yes. Jeff Zuckernick? Yes. Chair votes yes. Motion carries 15 to 0 with two abstentions. Next motion. The Kailua Neighborhood Board approves the recommended conditions for the 1070 Mokalua Drive Special Management Area as proposed by the PZNE Committee. Donna Wong, would you like to elaborate?
Not really, but I just want to say thank you to our council member Esther Kaayna for pushing for the Historic Preservation Commission. Because one of the, one of the recommendations is for an AIS to be conducted and the committee has been recommending an AIS for every special management area project in Kailua. And the commission says as language that they're going to say that Kailua should have special attention when excavation is going to happen, just because it's the predominance of finding EV and other artifacts. So other than that, hope to support the motion.
Any additional discussion? Online? Residents? Call for the motion? Josiah Akow?
Yes.
Yes. Travis Council? Yes. Amber Granite? Kellyanne Kobayashi?
Yes.
Yes. David Laia? Jade Lau? Yes. Mike Lee? Yes. Levani Lipton?
Yes.
Yes. Carol Mioschero? Yes. Kayla Morrell? Kate Ryder?
Yes.
Yes. Claudine Tomasa? Yes. Steve Trecker? Yes. Evan Weber? Yes. Gary Weller? Yes. John White? Yes. Jeff Zuckernick? Yes. Chair votes yes. Motion passes unanimously with 16 votes. Next motion, the Kailua Neighborhood Board supports the passage of Bill 57, 2023, Bill 58, 2023, and Resolution 23 to 28. This game rooms package would provide additional tools for the Honolulu Police Department and other city agencies to deter and shut down illegal game rooms on Oahu. Bill 57 would create additional penalties, putting up to $150,000 in fines for landlords who allow game rooms on their properties. Bill 58 would allow greater collaboration between HPD and DPP. Resolution 23 to 28 would also allow better coordination between HPD and DPP for code violations at properties that house illegal game rooms. Carol Mioschero, would you like to expound upon this?
Sure. So game rooms generally operate within residential neighborhoods. They bring guns, drugs, crimes into neighborhoods. And it's been sort of a problem ongoing with about 100 or so operating game rooms throughout Oahu, which is more than there are Starbucks and McDonald's on the island. These bills were introduced about six months ago to the city council and perhaps there has been some movement in the city council on, as of Wednesday, and so perhaps there's an update to that. But because there had been no traction on these bills, several neighborhood boards from other communities hosted a joint meeting along with HPD and asked for support from all the neighborhood boards across Oahu. So although it's not a huge issue in Kailua at this time, it is an issue that has not been resolved or is not getting better without some additional tools for law enforcement as well as DPP to better enforce and to have more teeth, so to speak, in terms of the penalties. I can get further into what these bills entail, but maybe Councilwoman Kaayna has an update in terms of what the city council has done as of Wednesday?
Thank you so much. Actually, we, we did have a hearing yesterday and because it was chaotic, we have, we're having challenges with the audio. We postponed it to today. So it was deferred, but not because of opposition. I don't think there's going to be a problem with moving it forward. I think the challenge is going to be for the Department of Permitting and Planning at the moment because they want to make sure that they are not expected to take on new responsibilities with regard to enforcement. And that's a legitimate concern, as many of you know, because we have an extreme backlog for residential and commercial application. And so that was, that was raised, but that was not the reason it didn't pass. The reason it didn't pass today was because Councilmember Tyler DeSantis Tam, who's the lead on that and other bills, was not there today. But I am not anticipating any problems because I support it and so do others. What we'd like to do is to make sure that any concerns by DPP are addressed before it comes. So I expect passage at the next meeting, next month.
Thank you. And to the extent that the Kailua Neighborhood Board approves this motion, it basically just nudges the city council to keep moving forward and to do your due diligence with regard to what DPP and HPD will do in terms of enforcement of the law, correct? So with that, I support.
Gary Weller?
Esther, I'm not sure if you know, but you know, the feds use the RICO Act and they actually confiscate the house or the property or whatever it takes. So it's not without precedent that this type of law should be passed. And $150,000, when most real estate in Hawaii is over $1 million, is not even a big enough fine, in my opinion. We should consider confiscating their property if they're involved with these gambling houses. But that's my personal opinion. But there is enough precedent out there. And the RICO Act, if the Honolulu Police is involved with the federal government, they split the proceeds from whatever they sell in the RICO Act. So it's a good thing for law enforcement because it gets some extra money to keep on doing what they do really well.
Okay, any additional discussion? Online? Audience members? Call for the motion? Josiah Akow?
Yes.
Yes. Travis Council? Yes. Amber Granite? Kellyanne Kobayashi?
Yes.
Yes. David Laia? Jade Lau? Yes. Mike Lee? Yes. Levani Lipton? Yes. Carol Mioschero? Yes. Kayla Morrell? Kate Ryder?
Yes.
Yes. Claudine Tomasa? Yes. Steve Trecker? Yes. Evan Weber? Yes. Gary Weller? Yes. John White? Donna Wong? Yes. Jeff Zuckernick? Yes. Chair votes yes. Motion passes unanimously with 16 votes. Final motion, the Kailua Neighborhood Board will participate in the Lanikai Emergency Preparedness Fair on April 14th at the Lanikai Community Park. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Basically, it's going to be similar to when we participate in the I Love Kailua Town Fair. What I need to request from the Neighborhood Commission is if we could have some handouts explaining what the neighborhood boards do in the community so that we can distribute this to the residents.
And we'll be asking for that for the I Love Kailua Fair later in the month as well. Yes. And, and board volunteers are, are also going to be needed. Any, any other discussion?
It would be good to know how many people would be coming. I have to thank Ron for assisting. He's basically the person that's running this and we're assisting him. So it would be a good idea to have an idea and I can communicate to Ron because they will be supplying the meals. So vote in favor, you guys.
Okay. Having established in the last vote that there are 16 members present on this motion, is there anyone opposed? Are there any abstentions? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you to Claudine for all of her hard work.
All right. Well, we, we spent a lot of time on an important issue that has consumed people for decades and we had necessary discussion tonight to make our way forward. We are late for, in the evening, for other business. We move on to local agency reports from Board of Water Supply. It's Danny Ornalis online. Marine Corps Base Hawaii.
Good evening.
Kristi.
I just have a few quick updates and then some upcoming events that we have that the whole community will be able to participate in. April being Earth Awareness Month, there is a Weed Warrior event and I have information that I will leave on the table for individuals to contact the Environmental Department so that they'll be able to get them onto the base to be able to participate. And then on, in May, there will be a fun run. This is very family-oriented, so great opportunity for families to get out. It's in the evening time, it's a sunset run. And I also have that information that I'll leave on the table. You sign up for that event, right? So it's pretty simple. As you folks know, if you don't know, the Offsprays have been permitted to fly and so they have been training excessively over the last few weeks to catch up on a lot of required training. There is one unit that will be deploying so that will minimize some of the training. We've received some of the training for RIMP PAC. You know that there will be a DV Day and there is opportunity for the boards to come out to participate. So if there is anybody who wants to come for the DV Day, let your chairman know and then through the base, if you know, we'll be able to add your names to the participation. That is all I have. And if you have questions.
Do we have hatchlings? Hatchlings and nesting?
The fellows?
Yes.
Pad area will be posted for September. We open for camping during the Labor Day weekend. So we're hoping that there's going to be hatchlings. We always are observant of that.
Okay, so this is the same
Same as last year.
Policy as last year. Okay, any questions? Donna Wong?
No, I just have one recommendation or one ask. I received, I'm sure everybody receives your newsletter and I like reading it, but the links aren't active. We will ask our construct about that. Yeah, so if you can make them active, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Online? Audience? Okay, mahalo. Sorry for the lateness tonight. Resident and community concerns? All right. Reports from the mayor's and governor's representatives, starting with Mayor Rick Bongiardi's representative.
Good evening, everyone. It's Shane and right here for Director Jim Ireland. A couple of things from the mayor's newsletter, just to point out, the state of the city was very well-attended and if you didn't catch it, I believe it is posted online. Town hall meetings are going on. You folks had yours, I believe, last week and tonight's meeting was at, in Salt Lake and those continue as well. I believe in the very beginning of this meeting, the chair mentioned the traffic update for Lanikai, so I will get into that. A couple of other issues that were brought up last month that I have some answers to. Kapaa Kori Road, I believe a map was given. Chair, I hope you have a copy of that for everyone. Please let me know if you don't and we'll get that to you. DFM reported that the vegetation issue, they did trim it back on March 2nd and those trimmings are scheduled for every three to four months as resources are available. Second was a drainage issue. It was reported that the Kailua base yard cut a 25-foot trench to alleviate ponding as well as BWS contained, sorry, contained water from a tank that was leaking on Mokapu Boulevard. I don't have any more specifics on that though. If you have any other questions, I can try to get back to you with more. And then the third issue that I have some answers to was flooding outside of the parking lot on Kailua Road by Times Supermarket. It was, it is now noted with DFM and they don't have a date on when the work will be done, but again, they do have it and they will get it scheduled when resources become available. And that is all I have for this evening. If you have any questions for me.
Mahalo, Shane. Questions for Shane tonight? Levani Lipton?
Hi Shane, this is an ongoing issue. I want to know what can be done to prevent people from dumping their trash on Kapaa Kori Road instead of us having to report after the fact. I grew up here, this has been going on probably before my childhood, but it is just so incredibly sad. That is a sacred place, that is our largest wetland. I know there's an industrial area, but I don't understand why we can't stop folks from dumping large trash like car parts, sofas, chairs, toilets. I've seen a lot of things. How do we prevent this from happening in our community? Does it take HPD stationing themselves there so that repeat offenders decide, okay, we can't do this anymore? It's just really an eyesore and I just, I feel horrible about it. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
At the mayor's town hall last week, that came up as well, together with the suggestion of extending the hours beyond 1800, beyond 6:00 PM. But some of these idiots attempt to go there and then they find it's closed and then they do stupid things. And so that was a suggestion from at least one person. Other questions? John White?
Thank you, Chair. Hi Shane. I submitted a request on the Honolulu 311 after a handful of people reached out to me since I'm on the board. For the Ulinu Street in front of Cinnamons, the trees there, there's a few issues. One, there's seeds on those trees and they've been dropping on people walking down the street and getting people's vehicles parked on the, on that street in the designated parking stalls. Two, the trees are very well overgrown into the power lines. We've been having some really high winds lately and we don't need any more power outages. We're having enough already. So if you could, you could bring that one up. We have, we have people willing to go up there and trim those trees amongst other things in Kailua that we handle. But one, it's not our job. Two, the safety issue as life power lines. Three, these guys got full-time jobs. So before we send personnel up there to perform it, the city could send a crew out there to... there to manage those trees. I know it's hard to get through with all the rainy season we just had. I see a lot of signage kind of blocked by foliage, so maybe something we can look at as the drier months pull around. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. White. Let me see if I can get you an answer on that before you guys get out there with your ladders. Because EMS is very busy.
Shane, did you catch the location?
Yeah, it was on the cinnamon side, I believe, Uliniu.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right, mahalo. Move on to Governor Green's representative, Eric Connor.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Eric Connor. On behalf of Governor Josh Green's office, I provided the chair a link to governor's April newsletter, so it should all be in your board files. And the other two outstanding requests from February and March were emailed to the chair as late as yesterday, so he should have all the responses from the previous questions regarding the Kailepulu TMTL and the various DOT questions, including the Ola Mana Town Hall survey and results. So I don't have anything else to report this evening, but I'm open to questions or concerns if you have any.
Okay. Questions for Aaron. Jeff Sokrane.
A colleague of mine at Castle Medical Center informed me this week that Castle Medical Center and the administration are in healthy negotiations to purchase Hawaii Pacific University and to make Hawaii Pacific University's campus a large minimum-security psychiatric treatment facility. I was informed that these negotiations have been going on for some time right now and given that this is going to be such a huge impact on our community, I believe that the community should be involved in these ongoing discussions. And I haven't heard anything from the governor's office regarding these very validated, verifiable discussions I had. So do you have any comment?
It's news to me as well, so I'll check with the governor. Castle is a private company, but we will work with them to get you an answer.
Thank you.
Yes, they're a private company, but if it's the state that's considering the purchase, you know, there's a public interest. Okay, mahalo. Other questions? Gary Weller.
This is a good one. I want to thank the governor for putting the flag at half-mast for the last survivor of the Arizona.
I'm losing it. Donna Wong, did you have a question also?
I wasn't going to, but I'll say. Several years ago, PCNE reviewed and EIS Castle Hospital to purchase HPD and/or they were given the land. There was some exchange. I believe that they currently don't own it outright. There's some agreement that they have that land. The EIS was for the hospital be removed, moved from where it is now over to HPD. Sueno.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just one quick note. Just a note to have the governor check in on Act 244 that he signed into law last year. This is the Safe Routes to School law that appropriated 20 million. To my knowledge, that hasn't moved forward at all. This is money that could be used to provide safe routes for our children in our community to walk, bike, et cetera. And so we want to make sure that that is continuing to move forward. Thanks.
The question about the release of the funding.
Yeah, and there's a formation of a committee that seems to be stalled as well.
All right. Any online questions? Any questions from residents? Eric, mahalo and mahalo for the data on the Ola Mana traffic survey as well. Okay, we move on to elected official reports, starting with Representative Lisa Martin.
First of all, I just really want to thank you folks for the Kaileua Beach Park hours. I hear the complaints. I hear a lot of complaints from neighbors and a lot of them are really legitimate in terms of smoke coming to their homes and garbage and some aggressive behavior. So I really appreciate that this body has had that change of heart and said that. I also appreciate the Lani Kai traffic resolution, although I know that won't have immediate effect necessarily that Esther Kiaina is going to have to keep advocating for the community on that one. So anyways, just thank you folks for that. I also want to give them on the gratitude. I also want to thank many, many Kaileua residents who testified and wrote in on the zoning bill that had me so worried, as well as Councilmember Kiaina and the City Council about waiting on that. It really had a lot of support and a lot of momentum from outside the legislature. We needed that public outcry to stop it, so thank you very much. It is moving on to conference, but it has been gutted. And so the part that requires counties to subdivide to 2,000 square feet and requires counties to allow three undifferentiated, stuck-together dwellings per lot, that has been taken out. And I don't think the rest of it is so problematic at all. So thank you for those. I also wanted to give a brief update on LFA, which Kaileua is, you know, at the center of our infestation on Oahu. Lani Kai, as of the week before last, we went on the weekend and is under treatment. And that was a long process started last year in trying to survey and delimit and figure out where exactly needed to be treated and get permission from everybody, which is no small task because there's so many absentee owners in Lani Kai. But we did get the first treatment in. We have to treat every six weeks for a year. We had community volunteers show up. We had a variety of state agencies that do that kind of stuff and we just have to somehow keep it going for the rest of the year. There's also an infestation in Keeluk Hills and now that Lani Kai has started, my focus is back there. I just sent out a mailer and we'll be trying to get permissions and buy-in. There's also an infestation in Kamalino, which is not my district, but I do know the neighbors there and they have been really organizing that to get that ready for treatment. So little fire ants are a big deal, but the treatment really works when you use the right stuff and you use it right. So it is something that we can deal with. We've had good news. The Department of Agriculture just passed some rules, emergency rules, that allows them to find people that knowingly sell products invested with little fire ants, which is possibly how all of this inward infestation started. And Senator Akil Ho'ololi has been very involved in pushing all the parties and state agencies towards better coordination and I really, my thanks. I really appreciate what he is doing as well in that area. One last thing, just to give a little recognition to our superstar schools. We had, Kailepulu is a blue ribbon school and besides Kailepulu, Manawili, both in Kaileua are the only blue ribbon schools in the state. It's really a big deal. It's based on test scores and it is true that schools with maybe that have smaller populations of English language learners or SPED students might do better, but that doesn't mask the fact that those students did really well and got national recognition. And it's something to celebrate that we have some really strong schools here in Kaileua. And without any questions.
Questions for Lisa Martin. Avani Lipton.
Do you know what happened with that water quality bill from requesting DOH to do more water quality testing, the SB 2322?
It passed my committee and I don't think there is any opposition. So I haven't followed where it ended, but I would expect it to pass. But now that you're asking me, I will check up. I have to say I've been checking up on my bills and just, you know, seeing what made it into the Senate budget, et cetera. But I think there is a lot of support for that very good bill.
Questions online? Steve Tracker.
Yeah, this is about SB 3202, the Monster House bill. We just saw a notice that said that it's going to be up for a floor vote in the House on Tuesday.
We voted on it today.
Oh.
And maybe it has to have another one because it was amended so much. I'm not sure. I voted with reservations. I'm very grateful that they made all the changes they made, but in conference, there's always a possibility that they could try to stick some of those things back in, but I tried to, I didn't vote no because I wanted to show my gratitude.
So what was the result of the vote today?
Well, the vote today was that it passed, but what passed is not the bill, is not the Monster House bill. Right? It's very much gutted and all it has in it is some stuff about simplifying the process of subdivision with no change in what counties, you know, what size they subdivide and also some changes in the way you calculate fees.
Thank you.
Questions online? Questions from the audience? And our big mahalo to you for sounding the siren call on Bill 3202. Really appreciate your proactive role as well as City Council and Councilmember Kiaina. Thank you. Senator Jared Ho'ololi.
Hello, Chair and members of the board and members of the community and everyone online. Thank you to Chair Hicks and for everyone else who attended our constituent field trip. I would like to extend an invitation to the rest of the members of the board and at the meeting, we try and, this is the second year we've hosted a field trip for members of the public to come and view the legislative action during the session. I sit in on one of my hearings. I chair the Commerce Committee, Commerce and Civil Protection, C4 Action, take it to the Capitol. Actually got the idea from another representative when I was at the House because when you go and work there every day, you sometimes forget that many members of the community have never even been to the Capitol before and were never actually asked to come and check it out. So we will be doing another one next year and we'll put out the invitation again and would love to have some of you come and just experience what we do on a day-to-day basis. This has been a very, very challenging year at the legislature. This is one of the most difficult years that I've been a part of because of the, we have sort of three simultaneous crises going on. One is the state budget situation as a result of the Maui wildfires. The big problem there is that the recovery effort is quite complicated and expensive and the way the federal government operates its support services for emergencies like wildfires are on a reimbursement basis. So the legislature is constitutionally required to pass a balanced budget every two years on a two-year budget cycle. When you are not the legislature, you do not have to necessarily make those budget calculations. We have to and the big problem we have right now is many of the federal government commitments have not been confirmed or solidified within that two-year cycle. We are expecting and hopeful that we will be reimbursed for recovery, rebuild, debris removal, ongoing housing costs. But there are just a number of those issues that we are not likely to see a reimbursement within the near term and so that makes calculating the budget very difficult. We are also experiencing an insurance crisis in the condominium space specifically, but there are some real concerns that it could spill over into the single-family housing market. Essentially, the property insurers around the world are retracting and rebalancing their portfolios because of a consistently increasing incidence of catastrophic natural disasters like the Maui wildfires. Their global financial system underwriters are taking major losses in those markets and so the insurance market is tightening, similar to what happened after Iniki in Hawaii in the 90s. There was, I believe, a seven-year, I was a kid, I don't know, but what I'm told is that there was a seven-year period where obtaining hurricane insurance, which is necessary to secure your mortgage, was unavailable without state intervention. So I am working on legislation with several of the other members in the Senate and the House to stabilize the insurance market and provide a mechanism for the state to enter the market if necessary in the summer and the fall when we're not in session, if there are insurers, major insurers, that decide to pull out of the market, which we're hoping won't happen, but, you know, very concerned about. And the last major one I'm working on is Hawaiian Electric Company and what the path forward is for them. There is a big amount of liability that's expected to be borne by the utility because of the lawsuits related to the wildfire. But I think actually for us as consumers of electricity on Oahu, the more long-term risk for the utility and for electrical service on Oahu and across the rest of Hiko Service Area, which is everywhere except Kauai, is that they can't get financing anymore because there is a real fear in the capital markets that if we get another dry summer, a fire similar to the fire in August on Maui could happen in any of the brown areas of the state, which includes the Kalahill hillside, which I saw burn when I was in, I think, middle school. So the need to harden the grid across the state has become not just important for our own resiliency effort, it's actually critical for Hiko to continue operation because utilities borrow money on an ongoing basis because it's just a very capital-intensive business and they can't get financing right now because the grid is in a very fragile state as evidenced by Maui. So the state doesn't have enough money in our budget to account for the risk that would need to be transferred off of Hiko's balance sheet in order for them to get out of the situation they're in. And if they're forced into something like bankruptcy, then the consumers pay the cost of that and the premiums would be really significant for all of us over a long period of time. So we're in a real tough situation on that. We're trying to work as hard as we can to figure out what the right and proper way is forward and also assure that Hiko is taking accountability for the things that they need and deserve to take accountability for. That's a lot. I'll stop there, but I'm always happy to discuss whatever you are interested in. Thank you.
Donna Wong.
Can you tell me what happened with the little fire ant bills or the main ones?
So there were, oh, five or six little fire ant bills. Representative Martin had a really good idea, which is to essentially adopt the restaurant placard model for nurseries that sell plants that may be infected. That bill did not proceed. I had an omnibus bill that was essentially updating the 1903 legislative authority that tasks mandates the Department of Agriculture to manage in bases. That measure also did not pass. We faced the worst level of bureaucratic rigidity and recalcitrance and just all of the terrible government bureaucratic tricks, delay tactics I've ever experienced in dealing with the Hawaii Department of Agriculture. It's infuriating. I'm going to get them. We're going to make them, we're going to make them do the right thing. We're gonna make them do the right thing. Uh, on the other hand, uh, the, the second part of it is that there are commitments in both the House and Senate drafts of the state budget that make significant appropriations to the Department of Agriculture for uh, things like port inspections, uh, new inspector positions, facilities for um, research and development of better treatment mechanisms for things like coconut rhinoceros beetle, things that everyone agrees on, uh, that are very good. So there is a monetary commitment, it's not gonna be enough, but it is a significant one compared to what the legislature has committed over the time I've been in office. So that's a positive thing. Feeding that into the bureaucracy that's clearly broken and considers the nursery industry that is responsible for much of the problem as a client is a, is, is really problematic. And I, as we keep going, uh, where I think it's, where I think we really are gonna need your help, I'm gonna come back and ask.
Okay. We, we need to be brief. Donna Wong.
Do they have, does DOA have a hotline or something when somebody can call in when they have rhinoceros beetle?
Six, six four three pest.
Okay, John White.
Hello, thank you, Chair. Hello, Senator. You, you spoke on the Hawaiian electric issue. Let's say they do, oh, let's say worst-case scenario. They get, uh, they get hit large lawsuits and they lose and/or go bankrupt. And then they need to recoup funds to stay afloat. How much um, fee does the PUC have over them to cap the price of electricity for us? And if they don't, is there anything in the legislative process that we can do as constituents to help mitigate uh, price gouging? Because they are a monopoly here with energy.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question, John. Essentially, the, the way the process works right now is Hiko is on price control that's regulated by the Public Utility Commission. We acknowledge that they are a monopoly, but they are a necessary entity that cannot go out of business because we need a, an entity to control the grid and provide power. When Hiko determines, uh, generally speaking, that they need a, a rate increase uh, of their customer base in order to do whatever they need to do or maintain operations, they need to go to the Public Utility Commission and submit an application. That application goes through a public process and the PUC needs to approve it. If there is, uh, so what, what they've come to the legislature this year to do is request that the legislature empower the PUC to allow them to securitize a fee on the front of your electric bill that they would then take to the bond markets and use to borrow money that they can't access right now. There are competing theories about what they need and should use the money on and whether it's enough for them to do what we really need them to do. Uh, so that's one piece of it. If there is a bankruptcy scenario, in the long run, uh, it's highly unlikely that Hiko will, will continue to be locally owned and controlled. Essentially, the debt holders will take over the company and reorg, reorganize it in a structured court uh, facilitated process uh, to absolve all of the, their existing debt. And inevitably, uh, that new entity will come to the PUC to ask for a rate increase to account for the cost. The, the premium cost on a bankruptcy will be substantial and they will be borne by the taxpayers.
So it's good that you're, you're looking at alternatives to avoid that scenario. Okay. Mahalo. Thank you. And uh, mahalo for the Capitol tour. And uh, it was amazing to see Senator Keahokaloli manage an eight-agenda committee meeting. Senator Chris Lee. Councilmember Esther Kiana.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, it's been pretty busy, uh, not just with city council business, but we also are studying our budgetary process and the state density bills. Uh, quite frankly, were um, I guess, very disappointing for me. I've been in this business for a long time, nearly 30 years. And the leveraging that was occurring at the various levels of government was just appalling to me. The fact that so many people had to work so hard uh, just to tell them that that is the county's kuliana and they were gonna disrupt the character of residential neighborhoods is just very frustrating for me. So I just want to say that. Because we had to special, uh, have a special hearing uh, last week to hold it after we crafted a resolution, get it passed by food council. So it was just a, it was, it was uh, something that shouldn't be going on. With regard to the budget, uh, as I told you, uh, we clearly are worried about hazard pay. But having said that, uh, what is in it for Kailua uh, is a continuation of what is direly needed at the Kailua wastewater treatment plant for improvement. So we have $46.5 million. Uh, it's continuation of what they need to get it up to par. With regard to the disinfection system that uses ultraviolet light to curb the high levels of bacteria that have been seeping into the bay, uh, that is a separate process. It's already ongoing and we anticipate that to um, be done by the end of 2025. Uh, Kailua uh, boat ramp uh, has another $640,000 and uh, that continues to move on its process. I have um, tried to fight for an increase for our community leasing team from uh, five to nine. Uh, I think everybody uh, knows that in the executive branch. The challenge is, of course, that we are short uh, patrol officers. And even if I say that we're trying to get a different um, level of funding, it's still very difficult. Uh, but the good news is that I, um, I do know there is some money in the budget. We're gonna try to increase it at the next budget hearing because now all of my other colleagues realize that they're, they may be short pre-pandemic. So we are short uh, for pre-pandemic. And HPD is supposed to get it for everybody so that if we, if, if they give it for me, they probably want to give it for everybody. Okay. Uh, another issue I've been working on, um, as you saw at the Kailua Town Hall, but it, it's everywhere in my district and elsewhere in Oahu. There's a dire need for uh, recreational fields for our, our sports, for youth sports. And uh, the Department of Parks and Rec simply doesn't have enough. And prior to the pandemic, the Department of Education was uh, working closely with the city and providing for that. So uh, I introduced a resolution 24-51, which Gloria is gonna put in the chat box, urging the Department of Recreation, Parks and Rec, to make an official request for use of state DOE fields to ensure the availability of school ground for recreational purposes. It, uh, we had a hearing, uh, what is today? Is today Thursday? We had a hearing yesterday and um, Laura is in support, uh, director is in support of that. We already have a, um, a measure in the state legislature, uh, Councilmember Elefante. So uh, Representative Martin and Senator Keahokaloli, uh, we could use your kuku'a. I know that uh, there's issues of liability, but of course, the county would take that on. And ISO has already told me that they have liability insurance. So I just would like to see um, the Department of Education realize that this is, this is uh, needed because uh, there's so many um, sports leagues that don't have enough fields. And then um, lastly, on the electric bikes and vehicles, I'm still working on that, so if you could just give me some time.
Okay. Uh, I, I would like to um, put a pause on, on questions for Councilmember Kiana for just about three minutes because Representative Cassie Burdick has a computer allocation deadline of 9:45. So if we'll take her report and then come back to questions for Councilmember Kiana. I, I appreciate everybody's patience in allowing that. Mahalo.
Thank you so much.
Representative.
Sorry, Councilmember Kiana. Um, I have a hard stop at 9:45, I have to be walking out the door. I'm dog-sitting for my brother and it's a mess. So um, real quick, before I share my presentation, Levani, SB 2322, your water quality bill just passed the Finance Committee. It's heading to conference. Um, somebody had asked about the status of SB 3202, the um, controversial zoning bill. It passed second reading today with 14 no votes. It still has to pass third reading. That'll probably be on the agenda either tomorrow or the next session day, which I do believe is Tuesday. And then somebody else asked about little fire ants. Uh, HB 2644 is Representative Kitagawa's fire ant funding bill. Uh, it increases the funding for Hawaii Ant Lab. That one is still alive, it's heading to Conference Committee as well. So I'm just gonna share screen really quick on my presentation. Okay, and we'll go through the uh, kind of the hot topic bills of the legislature. So we have a short-term rental amortization bill that basically allows the county's authority to phase out short-term rentals. That bill is still alive for now, heading to Conference Committee. Um, the Clean Elections Bill, SB 2381, which uh, Board Member Evan Weber has spent a lot of effort and energy on, his, it stalled in the House. But SB 1543 is technically still alive. It's a carryover bill from last year, it's stuck in Conference Committee. And that is actually the reason why we have, it, it's rare for a bill to be revived in Conference Committee, but we have a vote by mail because of a revived Conference Committee bill, so anything could happen. The Cannabis Legalization Bill, SB 3335, that bill died in finance, uh, mostly because of that $39 million price tag, but also it just didn't have the support in general this year. And then this is that zoning bill, SB 3202. Um, as Rep Martin was mentioning, it gutted the two most controversial part, the part that required the counties to allow the ADUs and reduce the minimum lot size to, size to 2,000 square feet. Uh, it, basically, the only part that's in it now is that it uh, states that private covenants cannot restrict density lower than the county zoning allowance and it cannot restrict long-term rentals of units on that lot. So I still voted no today just because, like I said, with conference, anything can be revived from a previous version and I just wanted it to be on the record that I'm still opposed. And then there's a, a set of controversial estate tax giveaway bills. Uh, SB 3289 and HB 2653 are both still alive. They would basically, there are existing exa, estate tax uh, taxes that uh, this, these bills propose to expand the exemptions for. It would cost the state around $43 million in lost revenue. Um, and these bills are still passing through their respective finance committees. And I just think in a year when all of our, uh, all of our departments are being requested to uh, propose budgets of, with 15, 10% budget cuts, uh, to put that in perspective, even during the peak pandemic year, they were only requested to cut 3%. And we were looking at furloughs, we were looking at layoffs, especially within the Department of Education. So I'm really worried about what the Department of Education is gonna look like um, with such a strenuous budget year. And I don't think we can afford $43 million as a tax giveaway to the rich. In lighter news, um, we're doing another little fire ant test kit distribution event. Uh, that Kailua, we're meeting up at Kailua District Park this Saturday, April 6th at 9:00 AM. Please sign up on the QR code or uh, if you don't get it off the screen, send me an email, I'll send you the link and we'll see you there. Just a reminder that Olamana did successfully eradicate their little fire ant infestation because pretty much, almost everybody in the neighborhood tested and they were able to identify that it was early detection, found it at one, uh, it was like one or two houses. And so they treated those houses and they're right now under the monitoring phase. And so we can do this everywhere. So we're gonna be testing out, handing out little test kits, little fire ant test kits in Coconut Grove. Real quick before I go, there was a large organized racing event on March 3rd that I kept getting a lot of calls and emails and letters about. I'm taking this very seriously. There's often uh, racing events, but this one was really big. So I sent a letter to HPD urging enforcement. Uh, they let me know that there's an ongoing investigation. There were several citations given out for that event. Um, but HPD is critically understaffed, so if you know anybody who can work for them, join honolulupd.org. And I also contacted the Parks Department because there's been talks for years about making a legal racetrack, uh, and some land in Kalailua. And I really think if they had a nice legal outlet for their need for speed, uh, we wouldn't see so much in our community. So, that's all I got for you. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm glad we were able to get you in. Mahalo very much. We'll go back to questions for Councilmember Esther.
Or any questions for me before I run out the door?
No, no, we're.
Okay, thanks.
Move on. Mahalo. All right. Esther, my apologies. Questions for Esther Kiana? Uh, Levani Lipton.
No, it's not a question for Esther. I just wanna say mahalo nui for helping to arrange the mayor's town hall. And um, I know that there were folks there, not just from Kailua, there are also folks from Waimea Manalo who came. And uh, we appreciate that Mayor Blank Giardi and some of his uh, staff came and recognized the importance of clean water. And so we appreciate that. And also, I had a really good conversation with the gentleman from your technology department about how to improve the 311 app so that we can specifically target like storm drains. It had something to do with kind of the flow of the algorithm. So I talked to him and that was good, yeah.
Gary Weller.
Hi, Esther. Hi, Esther. I was just looking at the uh, LUO proposal here. It says bread and breakfasts are permitted in A1 and A2. You, you know we have A1 and A2 here in Kailua. And that's apartment zoning. And if we're so sure that we want low-income housing and we want more living space, why would we give up A1 and A2 space for bread and breakfast for tourists?
Sorry, uh, what are you looking at?
I'm sorry?
What are you looking at? Excerpts from the LUO. Okay. I'm sorry, the, the current LUO. Oh, uh, yes, but is it in the proposed bill? You're confusing me. Is it in the proposed bill or the current LUO? Oh, it's in the draft. Okay, I'm sorry. What is your question again?
According to this, um, A1 and A2, which is apartment zoning, now the use of bread and breakfasts will be permitted there.
You know, I, I can't answer, uh, the bill is so voluminous. If you don't mind, I will follow up with you separately.
Well, I could see how that might work in Waikiki, but it definitely wouldn't work here in Kailua.
Yes. I'm, uh, the only thing that we worked on uh, was B1 and B2 districts, uh, which was to uh, allow for uh, residential uh, units to be built. And um, in the current draft, it would include for, uh, if it's attached to a building, the commercial building would have to be on the first floor and the residential units on top. And if they were gonna uh, build freestanding residential units, depending on the lot size, will determine the percentage threshold of what would be needed to be uh, business. So I'm not uh, aware of what you have. And if you don't mind, I would, I'll follow up with you directly. Is that okay?
Yeah, I think you could get the specific paragraph to Esther. Uh, other questions online, residents? Thank you very much for the work you did on 3202 and the special resolution. It's a little scary where DPP had been heading. Uh, next, Representative Scott Matioshi. Nicole Gray, representing Representative Jill Chakuta. Uh, reports from members who attended other meetings. Travis, counsel.
Just a very quick one. I attended the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization's Citizens Advisory Council. I'm actually on that council for my work. But the upcoming draft of the Transportation Improvement Plan, this is a four-year plan discussing a lot of large regional or significant projects that go for federal funding, that's up for comments right now. I'll discuss more at my Transportation Committee next week, but it is public comments, so I encourage people to look at that, oahumpo.org.
Okay. Mahalo. Anyone else who attended other meetings online? Okay. Next item, approval of our March 7th minutes. Are there any corrections or changes to our March 7th minutes? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Committee reports. Any committee chairs wish to expand upon the reports that are on the record? Okay. Committee membership motions. Any changes to committee memberships? All right. Committee agendas for May are due on April 21st. This meeting is adjourned at 9:53.